I call the public hearing on the budget for the city for fiscal year 2020, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Alderman Woods?
Here.
And Mayor Police?
Also here. Okay, we begin tonight with a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. In accordance with Illinois law, the notice of this public hearing was printed in the Daily Herald newspaper. The purpose of this hearing is to give the public the opportunity to provide input on the proposed city budget for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021. Staff will summarize the major provisions in the budget, followed by with public comment. Mr. Wilson, will you please provide a summary of the budget?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there were slides we included in the packet business. Uh, they begin on page thirty-nine of the packet, uh, which is the cover of the slide deck. Uh, page forty begins the content. Uh, as we have in past years, we've done important dates. Uh, so on February fourteenth, the draft budget was sent to the council. On February twenty-seventh, we had the first and only committee meeting discussing the budget. The notice was placed in the Daily Herald as the mayor said at his pre-annual on March eighteenth. And then April second is the public hearing of the budget, which is tonight, which is what we're doing now. Uh, moving on to page forty-one, slide titled overview. Uh, as presented and as approved, the budget, uh, had a surplus in the general fund. There was a budgeted surplus in the water sewer fund, net of depreciation. No reduction in current service levels as presented, net increase in one full-time employee. However, I will note that that position would have to come back to the council for final vetting before anything were to happen, uh, being the facility manager. Uh, there were some program vehicle replacements, one in administration, two community development, two streets, five in the police, and one in the water and sewer fund. Moving on to page forty-two, uh, expanded level items. There were two recommended expanded level items. The housing inspector going from part-time to full-time, the facility manager, again, as I mentioned on the previous slide, pending final council review and authorization. There were three not recommended expanded level items, uh, property maintenance, uh, expansion, bus stops no removal, and clock tower holiday decor. Moving on to page forty-three, uh, some important numbers, just the tax rate and the EAV. So you can see the two previous years and what were estimated to be us this year from a tax rate and EAV standpoint. Typically, the pre-final number from the county is what it winds up being. So we're pretty confident that that estimated numbers, um, the top two bullets are going to be what those final numbers are. Uh, that's presented there for your viewing. On page forty-four, just the breakdown of the sales tax rate in the city, the eight percent, five most of the state, one in the city's local share, one percent non-home rule, quarter percent to DuPage County, and then, uh, three-quarters of a percent for the RTA. Uh, on page forty-five of the packet, uh, some major revenues. Uh, you can see in there the general fund, presented some of the four either single largest or large categories, the sales tax, property tax, income tax, license and permits, foreign capital projects fund, the non-home rule sales tax, and utility tax. And then in the water and sewer fund, uh, the use fees, which are just what the utility bills are calculated on the usage of the water and sewer systems. And those percentages associated with those revenue types are presented there as well. Moving on to page forty-six of the packet, major expenditures. Tackle outlay, this year's at thirteen point two million, a little bit, uh, quite a bit above eight point nine from previous, but predominantly all attributed to the, uh, Ward Two and Three Stormwater Project. Uh, this is six years of the SCIRF program, uh, that's, uh, again, four walls, we're looking at everything that's accepted as I've designed it. Then the police pension fund, um, we're funding a hundred percent of actuarial requests beginning this year, um, and the increases previous and consistent with, uh, prior years. So not much of a surprise, uh, this year for the police pension fund actuarial request. Um, adjustments, there are no adjustments to the general fund, uh, from what was presented. And then in the tip one, the toward our quarter tip, we did add the hundred fifty thousand, uh, for the fire district. Uh, unfortunately, we had already began printing the books before that was voted on that night at committee. So it's just more of a timing issue than than anything else. Um, and then on page forty-eight, um, again, as presented, um, sort of the general fund, we're gonna propose to end the year with about a hundred fifty thousand dollar surplus. Again, that's over the fifty percent fund balance policy. And we will again present this and submit it to the GFOA for the distinguished budget award. And we have received it the past eleven years, see no reason we wouldn't receive it for a twelfth year in a row. Uh, and then, uh, page forty-nine, thank you, and I just want to turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Brad.
Hey, Mayor, Alderman Wesley here.
Oh, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Yeah, so Brad, let me ask, with all this stuff that's going on right now, the, this tax rate and all that, that's all going to change now. Do we have any idea how much it costs us for a month already?
Uh, Gene, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna pass the budget as is, and then, then we're going to, like, there's some projects that might have to wait, right? Uh, there's the HVAC project, the facilities manager, those things. The council's gonna have to make some adjustments to this budget. We just don't know how the numbers are gonna turn out until things start coming through.
Okay. Okay.
But, but I'm sure we'll have some amendments, or we're gonna take something out of the budget and not do something. That, and, and I know, uh, next few weeks, the manager and, uh, Mr. Wilson will be bringing some things to us for some decisions, so.
Okay, no problem, Mayor.
Mayor, uh, city manager, Mermis, wants to jump in real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
Uh, yes, just so everybody's aware, um, the mayor is correct in his statement, but I will add on a little bit, expect as soon as next week, some of the COVID nineteen, uh, outfall items, uh, to start coming to committee for decisions that are budget or, uh, operational, uh, impacts that we need council decisions on. Um, for example, next week, the first one coming to you will be the vehicle sticker program. And there will be additional items, uh, as the spring and summer progresses, as we get more data and more information, so we can make better informed decisions instead of kind of going off half, half cock, uh, before we have all the data.
Amen.
All right, thank you. Next, anyone interested in addressing the city council regarding the budget may do so at this time. Uh, chief, if there's anybody else that came in that wants to approach the podium? Yes, no?
Uh, there, there's no one else here for the budget.
Okay. All right, so there being no further public comment, the city council will vote on the fiscal budget tonight. Upon adoption and execution of the ordinance, the city manager will publish the final version of the budget and place it on file in the city clerk's office and at the Wooddale Public Library. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Alderman Woods? Alderman Sosnarski?
Second?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Woods' motion, Alderman Sosnarski's second. Roll call, please.
Sosnarski.
Somebody taking the roll call?
Yeah, Lynn, you want me to do it?
Alderman, Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. So, nobody opposed, the hearing is hereby adjourned. Next. Okay, let me go, sorry, I'm on the wrong page, guys. Okay, now we call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor Police?
Here. I declare a quorum, please stand, join in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, stand in the truck. To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice of our own.
Hello, I'm back.
All right, next, motion to approve the minutes for March nineteen, twenty twenty.
Hold.
Okay, that was Eugene and, and Mike, second?
Yeah.
Did I get that right? Alderman Wesley, motion, Alderman Sosnarski, second.
Right.
Any comments or corrections?
No.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. That passes. Next, communications and petitions, uh, chief, the residents who would like to be heard?
Yeah, I have, uh, Joe Cornejo from eight oh nine West Green Street in Bensville here, so I'll turn it over to him. Go ahead, Joe.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman of the city. Uh, my name is Joe. Yes, my name is Joe Cornejo. I'm a resident of Bensville, but I work here in Wooddale. Uh, normally this time of year, I would be starting my forty-seventh season covering television production, uh, but we'll wait for that to happen later. Uh, the first twenty-three years was with WGN Television, the last twenty-four, uh, as a freelancer. In twenty zero four, I started chauffeuring, uh, to supplement my income in, in television. But for the last year, I've been chauffeering auto parts, which brings me to tonight's topic, uh, the business of Napa Auto Parts at three seventy-two West Irving Park here in Wooddale. Uh, my petition is that you, uh, issue us our license that we may sell, retail license. We are very prepared to serve the community as an auto supply store. Uh, we are considered in the central business, uh, serving the municipalities and servicing the vehicles used for first responders and such. And I just, uh, I'm petitioning that, uh, whatever process be needed, be taken, and get us going to, like I say, so we could serve the community. That's all, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff and Pat, I guess you would be looking into that, whatever, whatever's needed, I'm not sure. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Chief, is there anybody else?
No, that's all, and I also, and I also do have Mr. Cornejo's, uh, phone number that I'll pass on to Jeff.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, I have no written communicate, um, under mayor's report. Hold on one second, I had that now. Okay, under mayor's report, the first item, a request to allow an establishment of community messages on the clock tower. I mean, we're gonna need a motion on that.
I'll make the motion.
So.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any questions or something, anybody?
Yeah, I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So who's going to control what goes on there and who goes first, who goes second, or what, or whatever, and how long is it on there?
Well, the staff is gonna work out the logistics. Uh, basically, it's gonna be still mostly city content. Uh, we don't anticipate high volumes of, uh, the schools and, uh, some of the nonprofits. They'll have some messages here and there, but.
Yeah, those are typically, Mayor, this is Pat Bond, those are typically Alderman Wesley for, uh, you know, if they've got an event coming up, the not-for-profits would like to just have some space to be able to announce, uh, you know, their message on it. It would be, uh, the city would, the city would retain control of the, uh, of the space and how long it would be up. But, you know, we would accommodate, you know, if they needed to have an event, you know, give a reasonable period beforehand. It'll be, uh, in, in, in a way that everybody has kind of an equal access to it. But as the mayor indicated, it's the, uh, the clock tower is the city's, uh, kind of gateway, and it also is, uh, designed to give information regarding the city. So this would be, you know, in addition to that. So if there's a city event, uh, that would take precedent, then there'd be limited space, if at all, for these others. But this, the action that you're taking would simply allow, uh, the, uh, the community messages to go on the clock tower.
Okay. Any other questions? Or legal?
Go ahead, Alderman Sosnarski.
Yeah, is there a, uh, is there any kind of legality as far as somebody putting something up there as far as, uh, monetary value, is that still not allowed?
Yeah, well, they, they're, we're gonna regulate the, uh, they're gonna provide us with what they want, and then ultimately, uh, Grant will regulate what actually goes up there, and it's not, it's not gonna be any. Right, it's not gonna be a, a for-profit, there won't be any ability for that.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor.
Well, it's okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure there's, there no, uh, I think we had this discussion before about that with people putting up like pricing, or how much it costs, that there was a, a money, a monetary va- value to get into something, or, I, I, that's why I'm just trying to get it, I guess, clear, you know?
Right, these are, this, this is just really limited to community, uh, community messaging for those not-for-profits. So something that would benefit the community at all, or the community at home might be interested in one of their activities or events.
All right.
Mayor? Mayor Alderman Woods?
Go ahead, Alderman.
Yeah, so I'm, so I'm assuming that staff is gonna write up, uh, some criteria and, and rules for this, so that we know who it's limited to, how they're gonna determine availability and all that stuff. Is that correct?
I would, I would believe so.
Yeah, city manager, city manager here, yeah, that is, that is correct. We have our own internal control policies that would be, uh, different for each sign. We have internal control policies for the electronic sign outside city hall, and we would formulate, um, there's a different set of criteria for the clock hour, which we would obviously, uh, expand with these new messages. But there would be criteria as far as ratios for, you know, city messages, uh, you know, would have a higher ratio percentage of screen time than the, uh, other, uh, not-for-profit, and some other criteria, uh, would be incorporated into our control policy as well. Okay, thank you.
Bob, look. Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
No, good.
Anyone, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. Pat, we can just do all in favor here, correct?
Correct, it's just a policy, there's no money being expended.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
That was a sneeze, or is that an opposed?
Oh, no, it was just a sneeze, sorry. It's not the COVID nineteen either.
I just wanted to make sure.
All right, next item. Next item is a request to provide support to Wooddale Public Library and the Wooddale Historical Society with the establishment of a Wooddale Community Garden that's, uh, being planned for May second. Hopefully, this stuff is over. Uh, I know, uh, Greener Tomorrow Committee's been talking about this, and residents on the Citizens Committee have been talking about this. And it just so happened that the library came forward, approached the city with the historical society. They're gonna be doing the garden at the historical society this summer, and hoping to move it back over to the library next year. Um, so.
I make the motion approved. Second.
One second before we go to the motion. Jeff, was there, were we supplying like five hundred dollars or something, or just some labor, I mean?
The, uh, city manager here, yeah, there is a nominal, uh, amount of money that we would expend to buy some, uh, soil and maybe some other small supplies. But it is, is very miniscule and, and well within, uh, staff authority. This was more so brought to council for the, for the concept of the partnership, as it was brought forward by a couple of different advisory committees.
Alderman Sosnarski.
Hold on, Mike. So Eugene, you made the motion, are you still okay with that?
Yes, I am.
And Mike, are you, are you with a second, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Mike, your question?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, I don't know, not, I don't know if the amended or anything, but we do have a nursery in town. I don't know if there's a possibility of us utilizing them, since the businesses are very slow. Uh, if it goes off at all, if that's still not lifted, but, you know, it's just help out town, business in town. I'd put that five hundred towards one of our, I don't know, Marhers Kerry Turf, but Green Thumb or whatever holds, holds, holds all that stuff, flowers.
We can look into that for sure. And, uh, just so you know, one of the citizens on the committee is affiliated with some kind of, not the Master Gardeners, but another group, and they also, so he's been given the information, and he might be, uh, bringing some, they, they might also donate some wood or something to the project, because there's, there might be some wood that needs to be purchased and stuff like, uh, Marhers, that could possibly happen.
Right. All right.
All right.
Thanks.
Any, any other questions on this? All right, uh, let's do a roll call, since there might be a few dollars involved here, so.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Uh, one last comment to all the residents who might be listening to this message. Stay safe, healthy, and we hope to see you and be live on camera soon. Mr. Mermis, your report.
Uh, thank you, I have, uh, two items tonight, uh, bear with me, uh, for the first item. Uh, Governor Pritzker has extended the shelter in place order until April thirtieth. Uh, we encourage, uh, residents to follow local, state, and federal guidelines moving forward. The city has compiled much of the information on our website at wooddale.com, uh, relating to COVID nineteen. Included in this information, uh, is regarding how city services may be affected, and a number of frequently asked questions about the stay-at-home order. Residents are reminded that they should keep up to date with the most current information online at our website, or DuPage County, or the state of Illinois. We encourage you to follow the city's social media, in addition to our news sources for the most up-to-date information. Please continue to be safe and contact us if you have, uh, need for any assistance. City staff and officials remain fully committed to meeting the needs of the Wooddale community during and after the crisis. We thank you for coming together as a community, supporting local essential businesses, and patronizing Wooddale restaurants that are offering delivery and takeout options during this time. And just an added note on that, uh, city staff was able to reach out to each individual, uh, restaurant and, uh, compile lists with what they are offering, whether it be curbside, whether it be pickup, whether it be delivery, and their hours, and we consolidated it all on one, uh, nice sheet, uh, not only to benefit, you know, the restaurants, but also, uh, the residents who are looking for that information that was up on Facebook. And it's, uh, if you click on, uh, the top of the city's homepage in the COVID nineteen section for the links, it's, it's right up there at the top of the screen in red. Uh, we have had a lot of nice feedback on that, and we'll continue to try to do whatever we can, um, to help these businesses. Uh, my second item, uh, there is an agenda item, uh, this evening, the Ward Two and Three Stormwater Project. Uh, it is a massive project for, for all those listening at home. I'm sure you've heard about it, uh, over the course of the last, really, two or three years. Um, we're, we're in the middle of, uh, phase two of a larger-scale project. We were originally going to have a open house for the public on April twenty-ninth at the Wooddale Junior High. However, we are going to have to cancel that, and we are in the process of making it a virtual, uh, open house, where residents could learn about the project and submit questions, and then receive feedback from the city on this very important project. Um, details will be coming up soon at wooddale.com slash, uh, construction, or I should say backslash, uh, construction. Um, just so everybody is also aware, that they will start doing, uh, prep work for this project with some tree cutting and kind of getting some equipment out into the field, uh, the wor- uh, the week, uh, May twenty-sixth. Um, but no major construction would start, uh, until after the Memorial Day holiday. Um, so we are keeping that holiday in mind before we ramp up work and interrupt, uh, people's holiday weekend. Um, that's all I have at this point, unless anybody had a question in that.
Hey, Mayor, can I ask Jeff a question?
Go ahead.
Hey, have we decided to cancel the Memorial Day parade yet?
Uh, staff is currently working on, uh, sp- uh, event, special event, specific sheets for each individual event and key timelines for each event, where contracts would be due, uh, deposits, uh, may be refunded. Um, so we are looking at each individual, uh, event. We have already reached out to the VFW to have some discussions on Memorial Day. We, at this point in time, uh, have not, uh, canceled it, um, but we are getting together information for all special events. So when the time comes, the council has all the pertinent information. But we are getting close to, to a point in time where, uh, Memorial Day Parade, uh, may be in jeopardy.
Yeah, but just to follow up on, just to follow up on that, Gene, I don't know if you heard, so Memorial Day weekends usually, I believe, the Daytona Five Hundred, that's been canceled.
Right.
Some states are shelter in place until June already, I think, like Virginia already, said something like that.
Well, that's why I questioned the parade, because that's canceled. But we did, Mayor, can I, uh?
They're later out.
And then I think we also canceled Green, uh, Greener Tomorrow Recycling already. I think we were in the process of canceling that.
Yeah, that has been canceled.
It's one of the events, so, go ahead, who's on the, who wants to speak?
Uh, can Tony Catalano, can I be recognized?
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Jeff, on the Stormwater, are we gonna be sending out informational, uh, pamphlets out a- as we, uh, um, you know, count out that, uh, twenty, uh, April twenty-ninth, um?
Yes, uh, city manager here, yes, we, we, we are indeed, and we had originally planned to send out the, uh, a separate maller to all city residents highlighting the project with information about the open house at the junior high. But we held back because we feared that the governor's, uh, order would be extended. So now that we know that it is extended, we are altering our, our flyer to, uh, to have the virtual format information. Uh, so there will be a flyer going out, it's just we had to wait until we had more information to make, uh, a, a good decision, and not have to undo something.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does that conclude your report, Mr. Mermis?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. If no objections, we have two items on this consent agenda, I need a motion. Any objections? Any objections? Okay, who made the motion?
Alderman Jacob.
Who's second?
Mike.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, we'll need a motion to approve the two items on the agenda. Resolu- item number one, the resolution approving a Resolu- item number one, the resolution approving a contract between Benchmark Construction and the City of Wooddale for the Ward Two and Three Stormwater Project in an amount not to exceed nine million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Tony Catalano.
Okay, so Eugene was first, Tony was second. Any questions on this? Oh, wait, I didn't even read the second one, I'm sorry, guys.
Thank you.
So, item number one, forget the motion, no motion, I have to read the second item. Item number two, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Dan, Dan Mechanical Industries Incorporated for the fiscal year twenty twenty wastewater treatment facilities improvements in a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand and eighty dollars. Now, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Tony Catalano.
Second, Randy Messina.
Okay, Tony, Randy's second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, public works, Alderman Catalano?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, finance and administration, Alderman Woods?
I have two reports, Mayor. First...
Go ahead.
Is inordinate, first is inordinance adopting municipal aggregation renewal twenty twenty program.
Okay, uh, are you making the motion, or with one of the groups, or...
Uh, wa- was, was Mr. Wilson gonna make a statement, or say anything beforehand?
Brad?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, so, you should get an email, uh, earlier today with bid pricing on there. Uh, real quick, I love the, the traditional bid pricing, um, as we expected, well, it's pretty much underwater and not viable options. Uh, there were the two, uh, green options, MC Square, which is our current provider, and then, uh, Eligo Energy. Uh, kinda looking at them, and with the re- emergence of the specific grant, um, staff is recommending going with Eligo for a two-year term.
Mayor? Alderman Woods?
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yes, I'll make a motion to, uh, go, go with, uh, Eligo Energy for the aggregation program renewal for twenty twenty.
Okay, and, and Brad, this, and Alderman Smarsky's second. Brad, I do have one question, the hundred, what was it, a hundred and two thousand, is that per year?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Brad, yeah, that is per year. And initial, this is per year, and the initial indications are that it's gonna be paid out on a monthly basis, so, we'd get around, you know, nine thousand dollars a month, uh, from Eligo, over the, uh, each of the two years, uh, for the agreement.
Okay.
I have a question, Tony Catalano?
Go ahead, Tony.
So, um, if the residence doesn't wanna change, do they have to do anything, opt out, or if they're, if they're gonna keep the...
Go ahead, Brad.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so, it's gonna operate the same as it has in years past, where, uh, you know, they'll get the letters to opt out if they want to. Uh, unofficially, there's a couple people that have said they never wanna be bothered by this again, and they've made that very clear to us. Um, so we've, kinda, we're working with NYMEC to make sure that they don't get bothered this time around. There's, I don't have the exact number of people on that list, but I know there's a couple, and it's probably the person we're talking about, or you're referencing. They're already on the, uh, don't bother list already, so, so it's super safe.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, no other questions on that item, I need a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next report, Mayor, inordinance adopting the annual budget for twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. I'll make that my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Woods, second, Alderman Sosnarsky. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, under stormwater, Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, under approval list of bills for April second, twenty twenty, Alderman Woods?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for April second in the amount of seven hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents.
That's your motion?
Alderman Jacob's second.
Alderman Jacob's second. Any questions on any of the bills?
Yeah, I have one, Mayor, Tony Catalano.
Go ahead, Tony.
Page fifty-two, this, on the list of bills, uh, the two, two fifty-seven Apollo Court, there was, um, a main break over there for thousand twenty-one. Um, Director Lang, uh, what, what was that for?
Main break.
No, I understand that.
That's for, uh, the... Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
That's for the, uh, the leak location services, uh, to locate, uh, the point of the break.
So that, okay, so, the reason why I'm bringing this up, I don't know if you know the history of Apollo Court, is we've had five breaks since two thousand and twenty, I just want to make sure, is this the same line? But I can talk to you after that, I just wanna make sure, um, that this is not the same line that the other breaks, uh, happened in the past.
Sure it is.
Yep.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but it's definitely something that we, we track and monitor, and, uh, it's factored into our, our decision to replace mains or not, so, we can definitely look this a little bit.
Thank you.
Can I, any, Mayor? Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
No, my, I, I'll, I'll call offline tomorrow, no problem.
Okay, anybody else, any other questions? Alright, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosnarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. So, we have no executive session, no item to be referred, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mayor? Hello, Mayor?
What?
You have, uh, I was gonna ask you, shoot. I got, I'm getting, uh, some phone calls, three residents already called, asking, I know, I know we raised the water bill, but I don't know if they're reading anything, or if we could send out another letter, or whatever, just let them know the wat- they're, they're trying to say the wat- we, we did it because of what's going on right now. I'm like, you know, it has nothing to do with us raising the water. They're, they're noticing it now because they're at home more often, and they're getting, they're finally reading their mail and everything.
Brad, can we do another mailer, maybe, or... In the next bill?
Just let them know it, it's not, it's not on behalf of what's going on, I mean, they, three of them, three of them, all three of them said the same thing. They all said that, uh, you guys raised it because of the crisis, like, no, we're not raising it.
We got a phone call as well.
So, I know it's only four out of all fourteen thousand people, but, you know, before it comes to a head, you might as well send another letter out, saying, stating that, no, this has nothing to do with it.
You know, I got a bunch of calls too, Tony Catalano, so...
Randy Messina's also gotten called today as well.
Hey, keep in mind, guys, it's probably because they're using more water, because they're staying at home, that's why they noticing it.
Well, they, they got more time to go over this stuff.
That's not what they're saying, though, they're just noticing it, they're not, they don't pay attention to it.
They're looking at everything because they're sitting there now.
City manager here...
They didn't notice it last month, but...
I don't blame them.
Jeff? Hold on, Jeff, can you, uh, look into that?
Well, that's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to interject, uh, I'm trying to clarify what the position is. Is the position that the city raised the water rates, um, in January because of predicting the upcoming crisis?
Yes, that's what they're saying.
That's what people are thinking, but...
Okay.
You know, I, I, I explained this to somebody yesterday, actually, they called me, so...
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Who is it?
It's Brad.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, we, we received more calls this month in the finance department about the water rate increase than we did the month that we actually had the flyer explaining the water rate increase in the water bill.
Yeah, I can figure.
Uh-huh.
Right.
And, and a lot of it is, we told people that was in there, and they, a lot of people have point-blank told us, well, we didn't have time to read it last month, and so they've thrown it away. So, we've been mailing quite a few out when they've called, because they don't have it anymore.
Right, just like Alderman Wesley said.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you want, you can settle back and put it in again next month, or prepare something else. Um, so, yeah, we, we've noticed enough tick as well, and some residents have been honest and said that they just, they didn't pay attention last month because, you know, life is life last month, and now it is what it is this month, and they're cooking at everything, so...
Right, right, no, no, and, and there's a lot of people that are, are getting laid off, too, and...
Right, they're starting to look at bills.
Starting to check every penny, right, um, so, okay.
I only have one other thing for the, uh, chief, chiefy there.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Go ahead.
Yes.
There hasn't been any, uh, I know it's not our jurisdiction, but the playgrounds, I'm, as, as I'm traveling around, I listen to the radios every year, all over the place, that, uh, you know, they, they really want the kids out of the parks, too. I know we don't own the parks, but, uh, maybe talk to, uh, Mr. Alman. You know, they've been taking down the basketball rims and swings, so, because people don't listen, and they're still, they're still, still congregating in big groups in parks, 'cause it's nice out.
Yeah, we did have a couple of, uh, complaints, and we've made contact with those kids, but the park district has also added additional signage, um, so, people, you know, it, we are gonna get a couple of those complaints coming. We have handled them as they come in.
Right, alright, I'm just, and it, you know, it's like I said, I've heard it from other, on the radio, that the park district, they've just gone ahead and just unscrewed the basketball net, so they couldn't even play, so, but, alright, appreciate it.
Alright, so I need a motion to adjourn, do I have a motion?
Someone makes a motion.
Okay, Eugene and Art, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.